Join, you're calling me to order. Can we roll call please?
Brian Card. He should be arriving within five to 10 minutes.
Ben Lawrence.
Absent with notification.
Michael Huco.
Here.
John Saratopoulos.
Here.
Matthew Wendorf.
Absent with notification.
And Keith Thurlo.
Present. Seating of alternates, Michael, you'll be voting. Any addendums?
No, there is not.
Citizens comments on items not subject to a public hearing. Any citizens comments on anything that we don't have a public hearing on about tonight? Okay. You want to read your note?
Or a public comment or?
Sure, whatever's next.
Okay. Public comments can be emailed to publiccomment@killenlyct.gov or mailed to the town of Killenly, 172 Main Street, Killenly, Connecticut, 06239. All public comment must be received prior to 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. Public comment received will be posted on the town's website, www.killenly.org. To participate in citizens comments, the public may join the meeting via telephone while viewing the meeting on Facebook Live. The phone number is 1-415-655-0001. Use the access code 26302395056 when prompted. I'm looking at the screen right now and the only person that I see on my computer is Mr. Luke Morrow and he is one of the presenters for Solly Engineering. So I don't see any other public comment. Do you want me to go into public hearing?
Yes, please.
Public hearing comments can be mailed to publiccomment@killenlyct.gov or mailed to the town of Killenly at 172 Main Street, Killenly, Connecticut, 06239. All public comment must be received prior to 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. Public hearing comments received will be posted on the town's website, www.killenly.org. To participate in public hearings, the public may join the meeting via telephone while viewing the meeting on Facebook Live. Again, that phone number is 1-415-655-0001 and use the access code 26302395056 when prompted.
Okay, special permit application number 23-1308. The Craft Group, 70 War Egan Road, JIS MAP 217 dot 57, 8.3 acres, general commercial, request to open a cannabis establishment, retail and manufacturing, section 567, cannabis establishment, section 700. Special permit and special, section 470, site plan review continued from May 15th, 2023, and June and July. Somebody here to speak to that? Could you introduce yourselves for the record, please?
Only put one microphone on, please, and put the green light on. Make sure the green light's on. Jenna Angelovich.
Nicholas Perino. Jonathan Angelovich.
Nick Adamopolis.
Hello. We are here this evening seeking a special permit for a retail and manufacturing establishment located at 70 War Egan Road in Killenly. So just to give, you know, we, this is a continuation meeting. We've been here before, but to just reintroduce ourselves, the three of us are the founding members of The Craft Group. We are, our mission is to be a fully vertically integrated cannabis company. By fully vertically integrated, we mean retail, manufacturing, and cultivation.
And the fourth, the fourth member?
This is attorney Nick Adamopolis. He's our legal counsel. Sorry.
Just like to know who we're looking at.
So to just give a little bit about our mission statement, we really pride ourselves in not being sort of a faceless corporate cannabis company. They certainly have their place in the market, but that has never been our goal. We sort of like to say that we like to take a more blue collar approach. We all live and work and have grown up in small communities and so it's always been our goal and will continue to be our goal to support those local communities. You know, we want to work with local businesses, local distribution networks, local growers, so that we are kind of working and supporting from the ground up.
I'm Nicholas Perino, one of the cannabis subject matter experts on The Craft Group's team. My background is in construction management. I have a master's in project management and I've spent really the last 10 years of my career working in the regulated cannabis industry in Colorado. In 2014, we were one of the first states to, you know, really embrace retail cannabis and we have some very established SOPs from our experience in the Colorado market. We have experience in retail distribution, cultivation, and manufacturing. We've operated for the past 10 years, held over 15 licenses in the Colorado market. With the shift of this movement east, we've really taken a focus in participating in projects like this and bringing the lessons that we've learned from Colorado to meetings like this so we can answer questions, you know, whatever you may, it may be about what we do and how we do it. I'm very excited to talk to you about it today. Thanks for having us.
Could you expand on what you brought in from the previous meeting? You had added additional drawings and some other data besides the?
Absolutely. So this is the proposed location. As we said, this is 70 War Egan Road on Route 12 in Killenly. You can see here, just starred, this is the updated site plan that was requested.
So this shows the, you know, the entrance, egress, the employee entrance is in the rear of the building, you know, the east side of it, correct? And the customer entrance is to the front, the west side. I believe we have 50 customer parking spots and 21, I can't see that number.
21.
21 employee parking spots, so we believe parking shouldn't be an issue. We do have a backup generator that we were asked to locate onsite, so there is a generator located behind the building which services the security, which has to be monitored between the 7 state requirements. No worries.
No worries. Thank you.
Yeah, so we did ask for a waiver of the existing site plan because we are not changing anything really exterior of the building other than adding the exterior generator behind it?
This, this is an overview of the establishment. As you can see, located on this imagery, you can see the, the red circle around the whole area shows the 500-foot radius around the establishment. Bylaws state that there cannot be any, you know, schools, houses of worship, libraries, public playgrounds, et cetera. So we meet that requirement. There is the closest house, if you kind of look at the dot diagonally, there is the house located there. It's about 416 feet away from the entrance of the building to the entrance of their house. There is a required 25-foot buffer zone that we meet. There is a road that goes across the street and the sight line is, is rather minimal. If you're, if you're driving on that road, the establishment sits up higher. This is just an overview of the front of the building and the interior of the building now as it currently exists. It has been vacant for a number of years. I believe it used to be a Dollar General. You know, just general, there's 8,000 square feet of space. It's going to be divided up essentially almost by half for about 3,000 space, feet, excuse me, for retail and 3,000 for, or to 3,500 for manufacturing and the rest will be used for utility rooms, bathrooms, employee spaces. This is, there were some questions at the last meeting regarding what the lighting was. So you can see here the front of the building, there's adequate lighting on the walkway along the whole front of the building.
Big Y.
Yep, in front of the building. There's numerous lights that are also indicated on the site plan in the parking lot. And then the second photo is the, the side and sort of back area of the building where the additional parking spaces are. So there is very adequate lighting everywhere in the parking lot at night. For general business operation, our proposed hours of business right now are going to be 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday for retail and 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sundays for retail. Manufacturing hours genuinely, generally, and Nick can speak more to this, run on a 24-hour basis just because that's how the systems work, but that doesn't necessarily mean to our, to my understanding that there'll be people in the building 24 hours a day, obviously. You know, our customer base, obviously 21 and older. Identification is required at multiple points when you enter and then again at a point of sale. And our goal is to hire locally. There's going to be part-time and full-time positions available for both retail and for manufacturing. And we are also looking to work with the college in, in hiring recent certificate graduates. This is the general proposed layout for the space that has been updated to sort of show the division of the spaces. To the right, you'll see the retail side, which is pretty standard. We have the customer entrance, there will be security there. Come in, you have your points of sale, you have, you know, a fulfillment area. And then moving over into the manufacturing side, you'll have all the different extraction rooms and equipment there along with, you know, the employee entrance, which is in the rear of the building, excuse me. And Nick Perino can speak to specifically the manufacturing applications.
So we're aiming to make different products at this facility. We, we try to offer a variety of things, not just smokeable products, but products that can be applied topically and taken orally. Our experience in the Colorado market has allowed us to create the technology for potency and formulations with a lot of third-party testing involved to allow us to bring these products to market. This is an example, just to show you of, of some of the products that we're planning to manufacture. We have developed some quite sophisticated spaces to do our processing. This is in a C1D1 booth and a C1D2 booth, which is basically a classified space. Some of our extraction equipment requires to be put inside this space for fire compliance. Here's some of the compliances that we've had to work through in, in other markets. In Colorado, the NFPA standards were something we were really focused on. You can see here that we've gone through the NFPA fire code book and make sure, make sure all of the equipment we're installing is compliant with the current code. We added some detail here to visually show you some of the equipment we're using. It's, it's not really large equipment. We can do quite a bit with, with pretty small equipment. A lot of it would, would fit in this room right here. This is the butane extraction unit here and the, the diagram shows you how it's laid out inside that classified C1D1 space. We've been doing this in Colorado safely for 10 years with this system. This is the ethanol train is what I've labeled it and it's, it's a start-to-finish system where you put the material in on the left side and it works through the process and out the backside comes out a, a really fine oil. And this ultra pure oil allows us to make our edibles and create other products. This basically is a distillation and extraction process similar to making liquor. It's a closed-loop system and this is done in the C1D2 space. I put some notes on here just to give you a feel for kind of what we're processing. It'll do about 300 pounds a day based on my experience with this system. And it's, it's only about 12 to 13 gallons of alcohol per run, so we're not handling, you know, semi-trucks of ethanol. We're really handling very small amounts of ethanol to do our extractions.
So one of my questions, Mr. Chairman, is if you go back to that slide, because I saw it, every run is 10 to 20 minutes and it's about 14 pounds per run.
Mm-hmm.
And you expect to do 300 pounds per eight-hour shift?
Approximately.
So if you do that math on gallons, that's way more gallons of ethanol. So my question is, is that the case? Where's the storage? Have you talked to the fire marshal? Because that would be a significant amount of ethanol being stored onsite.
Sure, I tried to label on the site plan, we've got three 60-gallon barrels.
But even, even that one account for an eight-hour shift?
It, it's recycled, so it's a closed-loop system.
Okay.
We only use, we can only do one extraction at a time and we recover 97% of the ethanol.
Okay.
So part of the process is recovering it and purifying the ethanol again so we can reuse it.
All right, so there's 100 gallons being stored onsite?
Yes, and we typically are putting a new barrel in every month. So we're bringing in, we're losing about a barrel through, through the process loss.
Yep.
And that's typically in the biomass that we dispose of after it's extracted.
Is that the only chemical being stored onsite or there are other chemicals with the other equipment?
We have butane, propane, and ethanol.
And what's the capacities of those?
300 pounds of, of a butane propane mix, which is the, the limit from what we've researched. We're, we're open to look through that more and dive into the storage of what you'd like to see there.
I'm more curious what the fire marshal wants to see.
Okay.
And what, if you've talked, because last meeting you guys said you had not talked to him yet.
For the record, we have, we reached out to him before the first meeting and we have reached out to him again and he has not responded.
Okay.
But this is a very typical systems that we're using in, in other markets under the NFPA standards, so I'm very confident that once he reviews it, he'll be accepting.
Same with CBD extraction, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. And the space is sprinkled. All of our booths have proper fire suppression and all of our systems are closed-loop, so we don't have a lot of, you know, volatiles in the air. Here's just some different certifications. All of our equipment's UO-listed and, and also third-party peer-reviewed. So we've had a third-party engineering company come in and make sure everything's up to these United States standards and not imported from other markets. Our welds and everything on the vessels are ISO-certified and we just wanted to put that in there for your information. This is the water extraction equipment. This is really a great technology. Basically pass the cold water over the frozen cannabis and what comes out is a cannabis-rich water and then we distill that down through freeze drying and press it into an oil that we can use for manufacturing processes. This is also a closed-loop system, so we're not discharging any waste into the municipal sewer. We don't have any effluent outside of your normal waste effluent for this facility. Our SOPs involve handling and disposing of the waste biomass in the floor plan. You can see that we've got a place to store the spent biomass and then it will be disposed of per the regulation.
So for safety and security, I believe we did send an updated security plan. I'm not sure if you guys have had time to review it, but we'd be utilizing Citronic Security Integrators. They're very well-established in the cannabis industry and basically all of this is very, very highly regulated by the Department of Consumer Protection in Connecticut. So anything in order to be operational, we have to be compliant. But some of that just, you'll, you'll see on the security plan, but it includes low-voltage intercom door stations, fixed interior and exterior cameras that are able to be monitored 24 hours a day by the state and also if requested by local law enforcement. There's contactless card readers throughout, they're color-coded so that if you are strictly working in retail, you can't access the manufacturing side. And these are just some more security points. All limited access areas have to have appropriate signage as required. The parking lot is currently very little, well-lit as we touched on and any additional lighting, which we don't anticipate needing, but if we do down the road, everything will be dark sky compliant. There's no externally visible cannabis signage that includes graphics. There's going to be adequate security guards. We will be using, you know, for safety reasons, we don't want to state, you know, a company publicly, but there are companies that are approved by the state that you can hire out through a third party that we would be utilizing for this establishment.
What's the, you've got panic alarms, where do they connect to?
They, they're shown on the security plan. They are typically in the retail side and also I think they did have some on the manufacturing booths just in case of emergency.
Where do they panic to, put it that way?
Directly dispatch to the police. Intercom to the local police, correct, yep.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, sure.
So but part of what has helped us over the past few years in this industry is being able to come into a market and train people how to do what we do. So we're very familiar with building staff in an area and teaching the SOPs that we've learned and bringing them here. And this will create a whole new workforce, a whole new type of employee here. We've noted some growth points here as well as the 3% revenue share to the town. I don't know if?
Really, it's, if anybody, if the board has any additional questions, comments, concerns?
Any other que, any questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, I do. You know, in lay terms, what is this, what's in this product? What are you extracting from that cannabis plant?
Have you ever?
And what other ingredients do you put with it for edibles, for example? Topographical, you know, applications, I mean?
We have one product that's an ice cream.
It's an ice cream?
It's an ice cream and?
Is it flavored?
It's flavored, it tastes really good.
It does?
Yes, we have a sorbet. But, you know, it's a great question because that's something we wanted to talk about here with some of the products that we make and how we make them. And one of them is a popsicle and it's made for?
Popsicles, though?
It's, it's popsicle and it's, it's made for someone who's maybe going through chemo or that can't eat a dairy product that wants to consume marijuana throughout the day. It's a 10-milligram product, which is standard dosages in Colorado. It's a big format edible, so someone who's struggling can chew on the ice all day and then enjoy the product as opposed to some other solutions there that might cause some bad side effects. So that's, that's one product and we've actually won a medal in Colorado for the, the best edible product and that was our chocolate ice cream. The High Times Cannabis Cup.
Going back to your first question, ultimately they're extracting the THC, which is the component found inside the plant. That's what they're extracting out so they can then mix that oil into the topicals.
With ice cream and popsicles and?
And they, gummies, they'll mix in with different solutions like that, so.
They make cookies out of it and stuff?
Yep.
You can make all types of different ones.
Whatever you want.
Whatever you want.
Sky's the limit.
And then you have to give a, ultimately part of whatever your batch is has to be tested so they can make sure that it meets all the state qualifications, there's been nothing added in there that can't be in there, there's no pesticides. So you don't get, just get to make these products and then just hand them out. You have to give them a sample from each batch so that they're tested by the state at the state laboratories. They'll make sure the potency is all in there and that you're not violating the regulations pertaining to what can be added to the product.
So when you make the product, you take that sample, is that given to the state before you sell it?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
So you actually have to hold the product aside until you get the certification back from the state saying it is now safe to send that out. And any consumer at a point of sale can always ask for the test lab results if they want so they can see what's actually in there, that it is in compliance with the regulations.
So excuse my ignorance, who, who goes in and purchases? I mean, obviously sick, did he have that medical card as it is walking up the street? What?
So this is recreational, so anyone over the age of 21 with a valid ID is able to go in there.
Like a, like a package store, pretty much.
So it's on medicinal store, that's a completely different set of regulations and structure. This would be an adult use, ultimately advertising one over the age of 21. You know, the good thing with Connecticut is they've seen a lot of their butters kind of open these up in other states and they've been able to learn from the things that have worked and not. So, you know, Massachusetts, for example, has now been about eight years. When they first opened up, it was kind of a crazy, they had towns getting shut down. Ultimately, as these have come up, there's been no issue. Connecticut's going through a lottery process, they've already issued 35 licenses, 13 are operational. They've seen no issues with traffic. I can tell you with a facility of this size, with a parking lot there, big Y in the Dollar Store would end up having more people inside one of those facilities at a time than this store would. You know, with the retail store, you want to turn people over, you want to get them out there as soon as possible. So they should check in, get educated, if they don't know what the product is, get them to POS and get them out. There's state laws and state regulations that ultimately say you cannot let people stand around and ultimately just congregate inside the store. So it is ultimately get that traffic in and out. That way there's no sort of bad repercussions coming back to the town or the butters.
Why, why wouldn't they want people congregating?
Well, there's, for security purposes, they don't want to have too many people inside that facility. So the whole point of it is ultimately just to try to get them in, get them their product and get them out. That's what the states, and that's not just a Connecticut rule, that's ultimately how all these states have come in.
What, because there's a, there's a danger that you could have a conflict, fights or something?
Well, it's, you have a, you have a, an item in there and you have a lot of cash because you, most of these sales either have to be on debit cards or cash payments. So they don't want, they want to make sure that the staff's safe, that any of the customers are safe and it is no way for a large group of people to come in. So it's very different, while the model's similar to a liquor store, you ultimately see that people usually spend less than 10 minutes inside these stores. The average user, at least in Massachusetts, is 55-years-old. It's not 20 and 30-year-olds. It's ultimately people that probably dabbled in this and back in the 60s and 70s and they want a safe product. They don't want something off the street that may be laced with fat and all or some other sort of narcotic. And a lot of people don't want to go get a medicinal card, so they are utilizing these recreational stores in a similar manner as a medicinal store. They're coming in, they're ultimately saying, listen, I have sleep deprivation, I have anxiety, pain, and then ultimately the workers are to educate that individual about the different products that they could utilize to deal with those underlying ailments. 50% of the products sold, at least in Massachusetts, are flour, which is the actual, you know, butt from the plant. And then 50% would be the topicals and concentrates.
Is this product approved by the Food and Drug Administration?
It's federally illegal. It's a Schedule I narcotic, so it's still federally illegal. That's why each of the states have to?
So it's not approved by them?
No.
No.
It's a Schedule narcotic. So each state does it, that's why the states have the port in their own testing programs with their third-party laboratories can confirm what's inside the product, there's nothing in there that would be detrimental to the consumer.
We do use FDA consultants as well for our labeling, so when you see our packaging, it will be similar to any other product that you, you'll find on the shelf, which does set us apart from other cannabis companies.
Anything else, John?
No.
Go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of follow-ups. So, you said the state law requires a minimum, a maximum time inside a facility?
It's not maximum, it just says that you're supposed to, as the owner, make sure that there's no one congregating inside the store for an excessive amount of time. That's why you also, the entire outside is under fairly surveillance, video surveillance so that you can make sure there's no one congregating outside the facility either. It's all on the owner to make sure that they're monitoring that. The video surveillance is going to cover everything inside a facility except for the doors of the bathrooms. That's against federal law. And there has to be redundancy in place in case one of the cameras goes off. So, everything has to have at least two cameras covering that area. It has to make sure that it works during the day and during night. And the reason for having the generator on site is that if there is an electrical issue, those cameras can at least be utilized and make sure that they're still covering there. Citronics is well-known, at least in the Northeast. They ultimately give access to the state to have full access 24 hours a day and they do give the option at no cost to the local police if they'd like to have access to those cameras also.
Okay, and you talked about security will be there during operations. Will security be there during 24/7 manufacturing or is it just the security system will be there?
So, the security system has a backup, it records for a certain amount of time.
Yep.
And we will have security on-site during retail hours, 20, for the whole period of time. And then during manufacturing, there may be a short period where there's not security on-site just because it might not make sense. But we could certainly keep security on-site if that's, if that's something you would-
And how the security works is it doesn't just ring to the local police, it actually goes to alarm.com. And there has to be a second, third-party system that gets updated, the town gets updated and then there's a call tree that alarm.com will also interact with. So, for example, the three of them will most likely get a call immediately if an alarm sets off too. So, there's fallbacks in place in case one of the third-party systems isn't working. But there's also always a direct line to the local police department.
Okay, and last time you were here, you talked about delivery would be off-hours, delivery of product or stuff to make product. Will security be present during deliveries? Okay, and have you identified a time for delivers and a location?
Yeah, they have to, they're, by all means, at least the-
Deliveries will occur most likely through the employee entrance. They have to show verification that they've been certified as a delivery driver. There's a manifest that has to be ultimately looked at, the product gets brought in. There's usually about a four-hour window in which you can then verify that all the products actually match something in the manifest before you have to send it back. You also then have to switch over to your labels on it, so it goes through a seed-to-sale computer program. So, once the plant's ultimately started to grow, it gets tagged. That identifier will follow that all the way through. It's either being sold as flour or put into a third-party product. That way, the state also knows where it is at all times. But there's just renunciations in place. So, the delivery drivers come two at a time, they give you the manifest, they give you the product, you verify who they are, you put them into the logbook and then you're going to have your internal staff ultimately go through that and make sure the product's not defective. If it's defective, it gets put into a bin, it gets mixed in with a third-party solvent to make sure that it's not usable. You then report it to the manufacturer that you bought that product from and then ultimately it gets put into that seed-to-sale so they understand that it's been destroyed and the reason for it being destroyed.
Okay, a couple of follow-up technical items, just to make sure we're cleaning up a little bit. The water waste, well, the water recycling system, you talked about that, that there's no water being disposed of. The last presentation had potentially some water being disposed of. I think you cleaned it up here, but I just want to verify, I heard that no off-site water disposal?
Correct, just regular, people going to the bathroom.
Yeah, outside, outside is sanitary.
Yes, and if someone's cleaning something and it's saying, you know, just standard water use, but there won't be any additional-
Nothing for the process. Biomass waste, you talked about that as well, there is some biomass waste. Did you list, you didn't list a quantity or location for storage? I know that has to be secured and picked up by an authorized waste hauler.
Yes, it does have to be, correct, yep.
About 300 pounds a day of waste.
And that's all stored inside?
In the waste storage.
In the waste storage, yeah.
Which is internal, it's inside the building.
Yes, it is inside the building.
It's on a revised-
Cycling.
Yeah, they're just-
Yep.
Yeah, they're just tiny on the copies we have, so it's tough to read all that.
Sorry, yeah, it's, it's really small on the-
I thought it was just me.
No.
Even with glasses, which I don't have any with me, so, okay. So, and the last thing I did not say was, is there any advertising signage or anything that you guys would be putting up on the building? There was really no architecturals for what the building, I mean, we know what the building looks like, you're not changing the outside, but what signage are you adding?
There's pre, you know, we had submitted the waiver, there is a pre-existing site plan for this that when it was previously the Dollar General, the Dollar Tree, there is signage like that it has been pre-approved, that will be on the front of the building as was the same. We're not doing anything, adding anything or changing any of the measurements that are already pre-existing there.
So, you can't have anything that shows, potly, for example, can't be neon light to attract minors. Can't be able to see inside the facility from outside, so the windows have to ultimately have a tint to them so that no one can walk by and look at the inside. So, it'd be the name on, most likely the storefront and then if there's another sign, you know, facing the road, they can put there, but there can be nothing that ultimately identifies it, has any sort of character or anything like that that would ultimately address the attention of minors. Advertising regulations in this state are actually much more stringent than some of the surrounding states. So, you know, really it's just the name of the business. You can't have anything that would draw your attention to it. Like I said, it's not, it's, the whole point of it is that you're not supposed to know it's there unless you're looking for it. It's not like a liquor store where you're going to have these open neon signs or, you know, bug eyes on the windows. None of that's allowed.
So, can you have the billboard in Connecticut saying, come to Massachusetts? Like, like you see on 84?
A loophole for that is, on the bottom of those billboards, it says, to buy clothing.
Yeah, okay.
That's all they got around it.
It's like the sign, you can't read that either.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's all they got around it. But, you know, similar to that, you don't really have the name, you can't have anything-
Showy.
Showy to get people's attention.
Okay, I don't like, I don't like the grabs, but that's funny. The last question would be then on parking, because last time you were here, you mentioned about you need to discuss with the landlord parking.
We did have it labeled on the new site plan where the-
You didn't?
All the employee parking is and where all the customer parking is.
So, no issues, it's all set?
No, we'll have-
We hashed it out with them, yeah, we got 50-
Total spots, an absolute bare minimum for just customers and then there is an additional 21 for employees.
Is there an agreement or is that a verbal with them or?
It doesn't really hash out the, it's more of a verbal for now, I will say that, you know?
And you just-
Our lease says all the parking in front of the store and to the side in the rear, so we have, that's what we put on that plan. We sent it to them for approval, they approved it. So, that's what we had Janet put on our site plan.
So, it's in your lease, it says in your lease?
Where we can park, it doesn't label the exact spaces, but, yeah.
Yep, and you said you, just to clarify, you reached out?
Is this maybe?
No, where are we going? You did reach out to fire and police department, but no response?
We have reached out to the fire chief twice, have not received a response. We reached out to the police chief before the first meeting and he said he had no comments and then we reached out to him again before this meeting and we had no response.
Alright, thank you.
Can I just clarify that? Part of that was the fire marshal was on vacation during some of this time.
Okay.
We are keeping him apprised. As far as the security plan goes, it is a security plan, so that is just being forwarded up to our constables to make sure that it meets with their requirements.
Right.
That's nothing that this board, you just, this board needs to know-
Whatever state by law, building code requires, right?
That it's there, that they do have one in place, but the actual is just going to go to the police department. I did receive an email from our town engineer and it was actually addressed to Jenna because Jenna had said, had sent some more information to him because he requested some more information. And he, his comment back was that he is okay with a conditional approval as long as it's clear that the previous submittals are, what you have before you, are conceptual in nature and the details, and the details and any necessary permits and approvals will be issued or approved by the town staff, which of course includes building official, fire marshal, engineering before construction begins. So, that was his only comment.
Yes, yeah, that was what our plan was.
We hope that would be his concern, yeah, we'll build it though.
Yes.
I got just a couple. Seeing I'm part of that older age, have you thought of any more handicap areas? I see there's one.
I think there's four in total, I believe. Hold on, will we have that?
Sorry.
If I can read the fine print.
I see.
So, we got, we have actually five, we have one here.
Yeah.
Two, three, four, five. These are all ours.
Okay, I was just thinking in the, the four in the front.
I actually, I was kind of, we were thinking, I was thinking about that because I was surprised there wasn't any there to begin with.
Yeah.
So, I could definitely ask Big Y if that's a board would like that. I mean, it makes the most sense because it's the closest of the handicapped benches to the front parking, but I don't know why, I wasn't going to ask at the time, but if the board- They've been very, they've been absolutely grateful, but so if the board would like to see another one, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to.
That would, personally, I would like to see some because you're going to, if you're looking at the older crowd.
Yes.
Which we are. The 20, the eight to eight, 24-hour manufacturing room, that's, how many days? Seven?
The process, depending on demand, we can run the equipment 24 hours a day. Typically, we'll start off with an eight-hour shift and then move into a split shift from there.
How noisy are the machinery?
Not at all, not noisy at all.
So, no, there won't be anybody, it won't affect any of the neighbors or anything?
No noise, no odor.
And Brian, are we asked about the security for the house?
Should this be an industrial park, this manufacturing business? Or is this more like a softy ice cream plant that you make?
It's kind of like a, it's almost like a bakery, we'll say, how about that?
Yeah.
It's kind of like a bakery.
Are we going to have a discussion after the public hearing is closed, the council here?
If we go through a vote, we have a-
We have a discussion, okay.
Not at this time.
I got a question, off of the mic and we got to tell you your name and address for the record.
A, right, Randy Brown, I'm here for a public hearing, but I have a question. You said 300 pounds a day is what you're going to wash, I want to know what that turns into gallons?
So, on the ethanol system, we can consume 300 pounds a day, about 16 gallons per run.
Okay, so, how many gallon tank do you have that's going to hold that and is it inside or outside?
We use a 60-gallon drum of ethanol and we only do one extraction at a time. So, we only have 15 gallons in process.
So, 300 pounds turns into 15 gallons, is that what you're saying?
We don't lose the alcohol, I guess is what my, we recover the alcohol, so we pass it through the biomass.
Okay.
And then we have a recovery system that turns it back into ethanol. So, we take the THC oil out of it in separation and then we take the ethanol out and then we re-clean the ethanol, so it, we basically always have 300 gallons that's reused.
Oh, okay, so it's, you have a 300-gallon tank that's just going to get, keep getting reused? It's never going to, it's never going to get pumped out?
360-gallon barrels of ethanol is pretty much typical operating and we'll lose a gallon a month, one barrel a month in the process, which is 60 gallons.
Is there something under the tanks in case one of them gets punctured?
They're in fire storage cabinets, all the barrels are.
Okay.
So, we usually only have like 15 gallons that we're working with when we're running this centrifuge, which is what makes the extraction.
Alright, I just don't want to see it go into a floor drain, that's all I'm asking.
Absolutely.
Alright, well, that's what I'm asking, thank you.
When the state of Connecticut approved this, they said that people that are going to, they're going to award licenses to are going to be those who were adversely affected by the prohibition of marijuana. How have you people been affected by that?
No, in the past, there was, there was two separate lotteries. There was a lottery for individuals that ultimately met the, that criteria and then there was a second lottery initially about just applicants that did not meet that criteria. So, they gave out a mixture of licenses to both individuals from low-income neighborhoods that had prior cannabis convictions. Then they gave out licenses to applicants that ultimately were just coming in on the business side and didn't qualify in front of that. So, I believe that initial 35 licenses they gave out, the split was 20 to the applicants that you're discussing and 15 to the other ones. They have not opened up the second application yet and the reason for that is the first lottery led to numerous lawsuits that the state had to defend against, so they're trying to change it to make it more of a merit-based application system and are also from some of the proposed legislation that's been ultimately put in front of the House that if an applicant is able to point to the fact that they do have a location that's been approved by a town, that would also give them points towards that system. The reason for that is all the 35 licenses that have been issued, only 13 have come on and opened and it's because numerous people will put in 500 applications, hope to get one of those licenses and hold on to it hoping that someone comes in and wants to buy for them. So, the state is trying to reduce that sort of system here. But they're not coming in as a social equity applicant, they're coming in as a normal applicant and during the first round, it was just two separate lotteries for those licenses.
So, our goal is to build like a business portfolio of locations and be vertically integrated and go with, like you said, for that next lottery round for the state and have these extra points and have them grant us licenses that way.
Was this a part of the original legislation that was passed or? Because I understand since that passage, they've come back and loosened, for example, how many dispensaries can be in a given community? It was first based on population, now they've changed that.
They did, so ultimately they gave that power to the towns after and there was a cap that you couldn't go above this per, I think it was 100,000. They ultimately said because a lot of the applicants that came online were multi-state operators that already had medicinal licenses in and they were restricted to how far from their original headquarters they could go. It also put them at disadvantage. So, that's been a change that occurred because it didn't affect the lottery process. What's happening now is this legislation ultimately will lead to how these additional licenses should come on board so that there's no litigation and ultimately to be sure that they're addressing this to licensees that have a plan in place to open up in the state of Connecticut because the state is making projections on a yearly basis about tax revenue that they could ultimately looking forward to. So, if these licenses are not opening, it's throwing their projections off also. But what, like for example, just, they just changed it in June, there used to be a $100 fee to get a medicinal card in the state. They realized that was a hardship on individuals that ultimately needed medicinal cards, so that was one of the things they just passed, they got rid of that, a legislation. It's now free in the state of Connecticut to go get a medicinal card. So, the state usually evolves as the market evolves.
But what you explained initially, that was a part of the original legislation passed where there was two groups that were entitled to?
So, what happened is they did the lottery for the social equity individuals first. If you did not win that lottery, you were automatically put into the other lottery for the non-social equity. So, those individuals got two bites of the apple. Ultimately, what they saw, because the only criteria was to fill out about six pages of information online and pay a fee, that some groups are coming in and just dropping, you know, $10,000 and just putting in, you know, 200 applications, for example, with just the hope of trying to get one of those initial licenses. Like I said, they gave out 35, there's only 13 that are currently open and a lot of those 13 were ones that were already tied to medicinal stores in the areas.
So, if you get approved, you currently don't have the permit from the state to do it.
No, yes, so-
So, you're, you're using this to go as a-
Right.
Yes.
Any other question?
I'm sorry, like in Massachusetts, we would, you would come to the town first and kind of like ask for permission, if you will. The town would back you with a letter. You would send that letter to the state, then the state would, you know, vet your company and issue you a provisional license, they call it, which allows you to come to say here to planning for a special permit. And once you get your special permit, you can proceed with construction. That's, so Connecticut's kind of like the reverse, almost the Massachusetts, but-
Connecticut's looking at this town's ultimate, if they're getting purposes for they issue out these licenses?
Okay, any other questions? Commissioners, staff?
No.
Nobody else in the public, anybody else want a question? If everything's answered, then I have a motion to close the public hearing.
If everything's answered, then I have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
John and Brian, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or extensions? Okay, you're closed, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you need him, you can try mine, one might be strong, I don't know.
I mean, they'll have to pay attention, is it thirteen, fourteen?
Oh, okay. Special permit application twenty-three, thirteen, fourteen. CPD Killenly LLC, Dominic Carpionato.
Everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, he's on the screen.
Okay. Let me finish. Five thirty-six, five forty-two, five fifty-two Hartford Pike, GIS map one fourteen dot thirty-nine ninety-five, five forty-two is GIS map one fourteen dot forty, point three four acres, and five five-two is GIS map one fourteen dot forty-one, point six four acres, for construction of a twelve thousand five hundred and eighty square foot commercial building with drive-through and associated site improvements. Zoning section seven hundred, special permit, section four seventy, site plan, continue from July seventeenth. Um, and this, this has still gotta go before the town, right? Is this the...
Yes, there'll be a public hearing on September twelfth with regards to the easement on the Owen Bell Park.
Right, so this won't be closed tonight, is the point.
No, I, um, staff would highly suggest that we, we can have some of the hearing tonight, but we continue it, we do not close it tonight, but we continue it, and we discuss this on our September eighteenth meeting, 'cause by then we should have the results.
And our line is, who, again?
Luke Morrow.
Luke Morrow.
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, I'm going to share screen, I'm gonna reduce myself, just let me know when that comes up.
It's up.
Perfect, okay, great. All right, good evening, everyone, members of the commission. My name is Luke Morrow, I am a senior project manager with solely engineering office at five oh one Main Street in Monroe, Connecticut. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, also a professional traffic operations engineer. So, we're here tonight, or I'm here tonight, to kind of respond to some of the comments and go over some of our planned revisions, you know, as a result of both staff review, engineer department review, and also, you know, questions and comments we received at the hearing last month. So, thank you for having me.
We lost you, Luke, hold on.
Our backup as we all just get around that.
Okay, he's got one.
I was rebooting.
Just give us a moment, Luke, we're just trying to get the other screen up.
Yeah, no worries.
Continue on.
Okay. Um, so, so we're here tonight, just, I'm here tonight just to present some of the revisions and address some of the comments that have been brought up through staff review, engineering review, and then members of the public and the commission at the last meeting. So, as high level, before I go through some of the changes in detail, we did receive an engineering sign-off from Dave Capchioni, I don't think I'm saying his name right, on eight one, August first, um, I believe we received a sign-off from the fire marshal as well, for his review of the truck turning and fire truck moving tablets on, I believe, August second. Um, and since the time of our last meeting, we've also submitted a review and approval from WPCA, we've also sent to Connecticut Water and the Connecticut DOT for preliminary reviews for encroachment permit and for water service as well. Um, we don't suspect we'll get, you know, full sign-off or approval from some of those entities, one because for, for Connecticut Water, we just haven't gotten through the detailed billing design yet, to give them all the flow information stuff they needed, but they have looked at the plans and provided us some preliminary feedback. And DOT typically wouldn't issue comments until planning and zoning has been, you know, has completed their review and has given approval for a project, so. Um, and as was stated, I believe, by Anne Marie, we are ahead of, on the agenda for the town council meeting on nine twelve for the proposed driveway construction and easement through Owen Bell Park. Uh, so with that, I'll just take you through some of the changes we've made, revisions we've made to the plans since the last time we spoke. I know there was concern brought up by the public and some members of the commission about, you know, people and kids using the skate park or the basketball courts here, maybe parked on the west side of the Owen Bell, you know, park over here, kind of adjacent to where the skate park is. So, we provide an additional sidewalk connection, you know, off the main, main sidewalk that was proposed along the engine's drive over here, with an ADA ramp, so, to kind of avoid people having to go all the way around this long, to the east around this Long Island and all the way west to back, you know, into the development itself. Uh, we also added some additional pedestrian crossing signage where the existing crossing over this Owen Bell Park driveway is right now for added pedestrian safety, um, and we also, at the request of some of the commission members and the engineer, in order to encourage left-turning traffic at, to the signal at Town Farm Road, we're also proposing some internal signage, so as people kind of come around the building, or in the parking lot, there'll be, there'll be traffic kind of directing them into the Owen Bell Park connecting driveway and down to Town Farm Road, so, as to allow for ease of left-turn movements, you know, at the signal there, and try to prevent vehicular conflicts for left turns exiting. So, just to, you know, graphically to show, you know, a couple signs here for pedestrian crossing, the standard pedestrian crossing figure, and then some, just some general, you know, signage to, to point people as they come out of the parking lot, you know, it's preferred access to eastbound on Hartford Pike to exit out this way, come around and down to Town Farm Road and access the signal. Uh, I know a question was brought up, if we could look potentially into, you know, the possibility sidewalks along the frontage, um, you know, I took a look along the corridor, essentially from Town Farm Road going all the way down to where the Day Hill Fire Department is, a couple thousand feet to the west, if you will. Looking at the north side of the road there, as you, as most of you are probably aware, there's some significant grade change from street level, you know, up to house level. There's, there are several properties with small retaining walls, several properties with stairs, um, I know those houses are located, I'll, I'll say, five, ten, maybe fifteen feet above existing grade level, and within the right-of-way, there's some significant topography to deal with, so, you know, in terms of, of providing sidewalk continuity, there really isn't, you know, the ability to do that, the way, you know, existing grades are on the north side of Hartford Pike at this time. Uh, I'm guessing that's probably why, you know, over time, the sidewalk was constructed on the south side of Hartford Pike to make that connection down to Dayville. So, um, you know, for, for safety purposes and, and, and for, you know, in, in an attempt to avoid, you know, a patchwork of sidewalk, if you will, we would only be able to kind of provide it along our site frontage, um, you know, our, our recommendation and our preferred, you know, path of pedestrian circulation would be this, this connection point at the crosswalk, at the northeast corner of the, of the building here into the medical office, and then along the proposed sidewalk in Owen Bell Park, and then a crossing down along the satellite parking area here, so it brings you out to the traffic signal at Town Farm Road. I did look at the signal plan, I know there's pedestrian head button, push buttons, there's a countdown, pedestrian heads, uh, and that signal also has a dedicated pedestrian phase, meaning all traffic stops, I believe, when the, you know, pet phase is activated, so, you know, there's, you know, for safety reasons there, you know, traffic will stop and there's a safe, safe pedestrian movement to cross, you know, to the south side and further over, you know, towards the east along Hartford and Hartford Pike. So, um, you know, for that reason, you know, our recommendation would be to keep the sidewalk there and avoid people, you know, having a patchwork in front of our, our site, which would then essentially lead people into having to walk, you know, along the roadway, because the sidewalk continuity to the west and the east just couldn't be constructed due to grading constraints. Um, in terms of the fire truck movement plan, I know that was a point of question last time by engineer and staff, we did provide a fire truck movement plan that shows a truck can make the turn from the proposed access drive in Owen Bell Park behind the building, can loop around to the west side of the building, to the, kind of the pull-off area by the drive-through, and then can also proceed to make a right turn out of the right turn, exit driveway, can also proceed in a counterclockwise motion all the way around from the building and then back out to Owen Bell Park, can also make the movement in from Hartford Pike, making the right into the site there as well. This has been reviewed and has been approved and found to be acceptable by the fire marshal. As far as grading and drainage goes, I know there was concern, and I'll get into the landscaping shortly, but there was con- concern or request to buy, to provide some, some additional screening and plantings along the western property line for the residential building that's located toward west, so we were able to kind of provide a flattened area at the top there to allow for some plantings of some, some evergreens to provide some screening from the development, for the neighbors to the west. We did revise the pipe materials, not, nothing substantial, but we were calling out for plastic pipe, the engineer asked that we change the callouts to do concrete pipes instead, which we've done, we've added note to the plans, um, there is a two-inch brick, two, I'm sorry, two, two, two-foot by two-foot square brick drainage culvert, and I'll kind of trace it for everybody here, it kind of comes in front of where the skate park is, proceeds southwest, if you will, to a manhole located in the middle of the site, and then further south before it connects into a system that crosses over Hartford Pike and then continues further south, which is under, as we understand, that it's under, I believe it's under state jurisdiction. So, we've agreed to, you know, as part of the, of the site construction, the building's gonna be located on that existing drainage line and manholes, so we will be rerouting that in kind with a two, two-foot by two-foot square concrete box culvert, which is essentially, you know, its size so that it will replace the existing pipe in kind, so as not to constrict flow, and the similar flow, you know, that's in that pipe today will be, you know, we be, will continue into the future. Um, if, as in talking with Dave, the enge- town engineer, if it's found or in construction that it's actually a larger pipe, or maybe it's a rectangular structure or, or a circular structure and not a square box culvert, it's understood that whenever they encounter the field during construction, that they have to replace that line in kind, so as, so as that the flow is maintained post-development. Um, let's see, there with me here. Uh, just a couple of changes to the grading and drainage plan, I believe it was on the former plan that we had presented, but I, I could be mistaken, but I know someone asked about cup fill numbers as part of the application, um, so, based on our calculations, we're looking at around nine thousand cubic yards a cut with about twenty-six hundred cubic yards of fill for a net export of about sixty-four hundred cubic yards. I know somebody asked why, why can't it be a little bit more balanced, you know? The answer generally lies in the fact that as you come off, as I had mentioned before, as you come off of Hartford Pike, you know, you, you encounter fairly steep slopes, you know, along the northern property line as you get into the site, so the state requires for any new curb cuts that we only, you know, they can't be constructed at more than three percent grade for the first fifty feet, and then generally, without requesting a waiver, they don't wanna see those driveways kind of steeper than, you know, five percent as you come off the, the, you know, the state right-of-way and into a private development. So, um, in order to comply with the, you know, the latest state grading requirements, those driveway grades kind of have to flatten out substantially over what, what you would see out there today, kind of limits our ability to, to raise the finished floor, you know, this building to, to a higher level, so, that coupled with the fact that we're digging out some fairly large above-ground retention ponds to attenuate proposed stormwater flows in, you know, in the proposed condition to match flows out in the existing condition, you know, those are some fairly large excavations as well, in order to accommodate that above-ground storage system to attenuate stormwater flows. So, and then there were some additional details in regards to manholes and other structures and stuff that were requested that we changed, nothing substantial. As far as the soil erosion center control plan goes, we revised, simple revision to show, you know, an area designated kind of as construction vehicle parking, I believe one of the commissioners, commissioners had asked that we depict that on the plan, so we show that kind of phase one, and an area behind where the proposed structure, you know, to be demolished is located here, kind of out of the way. Um, we also show some construction vehicle parking, you know, for, for the second phase during construction, that'll kind of shift as they're doing their site work to wherever they need to, you know, kind of work on a given day, but the thought is, as this, as this parking lot's kind of graded out, it'll be areas sufficient for, for a parker, parking for construction workers and whatnot. And then, last substantial change to the plans, we added some screen buffers, sixteen, sixteen green giant arborvitae's were proposing along the western property line to kind of screen, screen the development from the neighbors to our west. Typically, I will see these installed at around a four to six-foot height, if you will, but we're proposing eight to ten-foot-high trees, so, you know, at, at installation time, they're kind of larger than, you know, what we typically spec, so to kind of, try to provide some, you know, added screening at time of installation, so over time, it'll grow into a nice, you know, full screen to, you know, essentially, you know, in a few years, block off, you know, fill in and block off the view of the building to the greatest extent that we could. You know, there was some, some questions asked about the, the equipment or air conditioning equipment, ventilation equipment on the roof, just to touch on that quickly, I'm not sure if Kevin had or not last time, there is a four-foot parapet at the corners of the building that kind of wraps around to the sides as well, so, over the roof line, so, that, that inherently functions to kind of, you know, screen that equipment and, and kind of visually and from a noise perspective as well, kind of prevent, you know, noise, noise spill over and, you know, in visual perspective as well, from neighboring properties. And I know there was some questions and concerns over some signage, maybe some signage misplacement on the building, so the latest package everyone has should have the correct tenant labels on all sides of the building, and our architects have also revised the architectural plans to match the locations of where the tree plantings are, you know, to kind of match up with our landscaping plan, bike racks and some ADA and parking stalls in front of the building as well. And with that... Um, and with that, I will open it up to any, uh, additional questions, comments, concerns that anyone has. Thank you.
Commissioners?
I have a couple of questions. Well, I'm talking to a guy and now I gotta talk to the mic. Jesus. Um, so it's kind of hard. I want to focus. Well, you've got your detention. Is that detention or retention basins?
Two, two, you have one's a detention pond, one's for water quality and one's strictly for just, uh, attenuation.
So if I'm not mistaken, that's a very sandy gravelly area down in that whole area? Um, was there any consideration? Because they look, they look kind of massive and, and you are bordering a regis-, uh, residential area. Would it be possible to put in like big eight by eight dry wells in there to kind of minimize the size of those, uh, basins?
So, so these pond, the bottom of pond is located, um, probably good ten to twelve feet below, um, you know, grade, uh, as, you know, because the site to our west is significantly higher, um, as we're cutting down here. So, you know, preliminary, preliminary, um, geotechnical investig- investigation was done. They found, um, you know, acceptable perk rates in the soils. They didn't identify any, any concerns specifically where we told them we were doing our, we were planning to kind of our detention ponds and they, and they thought that we can get, uh, acceptable perks and that we wouldn't be encountering, you know, any type of issues, um, into that effect. I, I don't, um, you know, I don't any foresee any issues with, you know, groundwater, um, you know, or any type of, you know, issues with, um, you know, with the perking or, or affecting, you know, stormwater runoff, you know, causing issues with flooding or, or backing up into the detention system, anything to that effect. So, um, you know, as far as we understand it, um, it should, it should function as designed.
You didn't answer my question. I asked if you could put some dry wells in there and try to shrink the size of the basins so they weren't so large.
So in order, in order to attenuate the flows, um, I don't think any, unless it was a substantially sized underground attention system that we would be able to get the volume that we would need in order to do that.
Well, I'm not trying to replace it. I'm just trying to minimize it.
So the, so this, this basin here, the, the, the volume of the bottom of the pond was sized to meet the water quality requirements, um, for the state of Connecticut. So in, in terms of, you know, in terms of reducing the footprint of this pond here on the north side of the building, um, you know, that was specifically sized with that water quality volume in mind. Um, it's holding like, you know, a foot and a half of water below that outlet control structure so that it's, you know, kind of treated naturally instead of by a mechanical means. Uh, we, we could certainly look into possibly putting in a dry well or something like that. I just, I don't, I don't think it would have a substantial, um, you know, impact on the, on the ability to reduce those detention ponds, um, you know, be, just because of, of the change in impervious area as a result of the project. But it's something we can certainly, we can look into.
Well, I, I know Burger King has totally drained by dry wells and not any sediment basins. Um, and they're in the same type of soils as you are from experience. Um, I'm just looking at, it seems like it would be minimal, if you could minimize it for, uh, public nuisance basically, especially for the residential neighbors next door.
Sure, we can, and we can, you know, if, if it amazes your commission, we can certainly, we can look into seeing if, if there's a possibility to do that and try to, you know, try to reduce some of that storage.
And so, uh, as in terms of the buffering that you're providing, how, how wide of an area is it you're providing?
Uh, we have, this buffer is about, uh, well, I guess the flat area we'll call on the top is about six feet wide or so.
Six? Six feet?
Exactly, yeah. And then the slope down to the pond starts on the east side of the buffer plantings.
And that, so what's that allow for a six foot, I mean, for a single tree or a shrub or?
Well, well, I mean, if the, if the, if the trunk was to be placed at the top of slope, um, you know, you have six feet to the property line and then another six foot, if you will, spill over onto the slope. So about ten to twelve feet.
Well, well, part of that would be in a slope though, right?
Well, it would be over the slope. So we, we have a flat area from the property line that extends about six feet. So you can, you can, you can plant a tree about five, five feet or so off the property.
Right.
A ten-foot diameter spread.
So then how, part of the tree is on the neighbor's property and then part of it is on yours when you're done? Is it full growth?
The intent would be, I know depicted here, the intent would be that, you know, the ten, the ten-foot diameter would be, you know, would be essentially stopped at the property.
And how tall are the trees that you're proposing to put in place?
We're proposing trees that are eight to ten feet at kind of planting. Like they'll grow anywhere from six to, to twelve inches a year.
And how's the maximum height?
Uh, the maximum height of these green giant arborvitae, I'm not a, I am not an arborist, but my, my landscape architects tell me they'll grow a good forty to fifty feet or so, maybe more, so.
And the maximum width, uh, maximum width?
Um, you know, it, it kind of, kind of as, you know, you know, in, in between the trees, they'll, you know, will kind of grow until they, they kind of, uh, you know.
Butt up against the other one?
Exactly. And then it'll be, you know, in order to prevent, um, you know, encroachment into the property line on the west, you know, some, some trimming would have to occur.
So east-west growth, I'll call it, um, would you expect it to go twelve feet, fifteen, eighteen? You know, across diameter?
I, I said, I'm not, I'm not a landscape architect by trade, but, you know, I'm told probably somewhere between twenty to twenty-five if they were allowed to continue to grow.
I'm questioning whether you have enough space there to actually provide a, a good buffer without encroaching on the neighbor's property. Again, it goes back to the size of the basins. Anybody else got any questions?
I want to see a sidewalk on it.
That side?
One oh one, yeah. There was a pedestrian hit right down the road from there within the last month.
So, and, and just, you know, again, just to, and I understand the concern, but, you know, the, the sidewalk would only, you know, it would only accommodate someone essentially starting on our property, going to our, you know, from our western driveway.
To the light.
Eastern driveway, and then it would force them into the, it would, you know, force a pedestrian into the, into the street because there's no opportunity for sidewalk continuation because the slope at the bank is, is pretty steep right away there. So.
There should be.
Well, how about a sidewalk at the southeast corner and then directly down to the, uh, traffic light where the sidewalks enters, uh, you know, where the crossing is?
Well, that, that's my, that's my point. There, there's, if you, the, the slope, the slope of the bank property in the right of way.
Okay, I understand.
You got a good two to one, three to one there. It's, it's, it's prohibitive and able to, to be able to install a sidewalk along, you know, essentially the sidewalk, because we're flattening out as, as a result of our, of our grading, our site development. Um, you know, that, that you're, you're, you're kind of leading a pedestrian into the shoulder of the roadway, um, which is, you know, inherently why we're making these pedestrian upgrades and ADA ramps into the park and trying to direct them around to be able to cross, um, let me put my hand in here. Um, you know, to be able to come around and then cross safely over here. Because as you get into, if you could see my mouse, this area is fairly steep. Um, and then right when you go past the site to the west as well, the slope enters the stair here up to neighboring property to our west. Um, and to be able, it's prohibitive, um, to be able to install a sidewalk. So there would be no continuity and essentially you'd only have, you know, one swath of sidewalk that would extend, you know, along our frontage. You wouldn't really get anyone anywhere because you'd have to, people would have to be diverted into the roadway in order to continue that crossing. Our, in our mind, it was, you know, it's our, for safety reasons, it's our preferred, um, you know, objective to keep them, you know, along the back here, um, along this proposed sidewalk and then at these crossings as well. And then upgrade with a four-way stop for safety and then some, uh, additional pedestrian signage as well, notifying drivers, there's a crossing here.
Would you consider a sidewalk in front of your property? Only?
I, it's, it'll get, it's, it's something we can certainly consider. I just, I just want to make sure we're, you know, from our perspective that we're not, we're, I just don't want to, you know, be, you know, kind of leading, leading pedestrians into, you know, having to walk within the shoulder here along in front of the bank.
Yeah, but you got residents, residents to the west and you got Owen Bell's right across the street. They're going to cross there to go to your, to your restaurants. They're not going to go to the traffic light. Human nature says the shortest route. And so they're going to, right by High Street, they're going to cross right where those bushes are, right there.
Yeah, I had to. I understood. So, so if I understand the, the commission's requesting we just do a sidewalk along our, our swath of frontage here.
At least.
That'd be a good start.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll, you know, I will, I will go back and discuss with the, um, you know, with the, with the developer. We can certainly address that at the next hearing, but your, your concerns are, are bothering to understand.
This is Amory. This is staff talking. Uh, we've got a couple of issues here because I, I see the dotted line. Is that dotted line, um, between the trees, right? Is that where the state?
That's the right.
That's the state right of way? So you'd need a permission from the state. And so the state may or may not grant it. Next door to you to what I'm going to say is the east, which is Stewart City Savings Bank. That's somebody totally different. That's another private landowner. To the west is another private landowner. Um, so that, we've got a couple of situations that they're dealing with here. So even if we can say you need to make a sidewalk there, the state of Connecticut may say no go. Just want to make you aware of that.
The other alternative is to put a light there, I guess, because that's where they're going to cross, you know. Come, you see it right now?
I don't want to speak, speak on the state's behalf, but based on my, based on my, um, deals with the state, I think it's highly unlikely that they would be agreeable to a light here considering, um, there's one, you know, a couple hundred feet to the east. Um, not my decision, but I just, you know, I've been doing this for, for quite some time and working with DOTs and Encroaching Patrol and others.
Sidewalk.
I, I, I don't see, I don't see the state being agreeable to that. Certainly something we could ask them, but I, I don't, I don't think they would, they would probably put a light there.
So change the subject.
Always had a signalized intersection where they can do a crosswalk and pedestrian heads.
So change the subject for a minute. You got, um, is the parking lot, I see you have markings on it for directional, for traffic directions? Is that the intent to have that painted out on the end project?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
Uh, yeah, so I got a question on your traffic study. It's the same question Town Engineer had. Can you go through your response a little bit to his question twenty-eight about the potential slight loss of, the slight loss of service level?
Yeah, so, so I think what he, what his question was is he was reviewing it and without getting into the, the boring minutia of how traffic engineering works. Um, essentially, the, the signals on Hartford Pike, you know, wait for me for a second because I think I have a plan showing everything we, here we go. Um, the signals on Hartford Pike, I believe from Town Farm Road and then the entrance ramps and then to Putnam Pike Route twelve here, um, they're all on a coordinated loop, uh, essentially meaning that, um, you know, they interact with each other. Um, you know, they coordinate with each other through a closed-loop system. So, um, you know, as traffic volume changes from, uh, during the day or from, you know, from one intersection to the other, um, you know, they kind of, they kind of, um, have the ability to, to, um, um, adapt to that, if, if you will. So, so essentially, but what the question was, um, he was noticing that in, in certain instances, uh, during AM or PM, say, and not Saturday, um, levels of service or delays were increased by, say, four to five seconds at one approach. Whereas, uh, maybe in the Saturday time peak, um, the delay went, actually went down or the level of sort of, I think the levels of service remain unchanged. Maybe the delay went down a few seconds along the corridor. He was asking, um, specifically, um, you know, why that might happen. And my response to him was that because these are in a coordinated loop, um, and the way the model works, if at any given time, um, there's additional green time given to one light, um, it affects, it affects the plating or the amount of cars that get through from one signal to another signal to another signal as you progress down the corridor. And because they're all linked together in the model, um, you get those, those slight variations where in some instances you, you know, may show maybe westbound getting a, a couple seconds, um, you know, added delay during the AM or PM period where in Saturday, although there's some additional traffic, it actually showed one, one or two of the movements actually improving by a second or two. Um, he just wanted some additional clarification as to what, you know, why exactly that was happening. It's, and, and it comes down to essentially it's a network issue, um, a network timing thing because the signals are coordinated, uh, and the software we use synchro takes that all into account to try to model the results as best as it can. So essentially, um, you know, when we evaluated, uh, existing versus, uh, no build conditions, which would be, um, you know, a next year at the time of opening of the store, but yet, but, um, the development, uh, was not yet open. And then compared that to, um, build year conditions, which would be projected into next year with, with the development open, um, you know, our, the analysis indicates that essentially, um, there's no changes to levels of service, uh, along the corridor. Uh, there's no, um, you know, extensive change, um, in the amount of delay, um, average delay that a driver would, um, experience when this development comes online. And then in terms of queuing, uh, along the corridor and then again along the side streets, um, the increase in queuing was minimal to about, you know, one to two additional cars over, uh, existing conditions. Uh, again, this, you know, this is submitted, um, you know, to the state for review. Uh, it'll be reviewed by their, their traffic engineer at the district as part of the Encroaching Patrol review. And then when I discuss this with Dave, uh, you know, he understood and signed off on it. So I hope that kind of makes, makes some sense, what I described.
Uh, it does. Just then a follow-up question on that too, um, related to that because I don't know if it's part of the analysis, but your eastbound driveway is a full-service driveway? Whereas your westbound's a right turn only? Um, was that looked at to swap those or was the analysis done, um, with those being swapped to see if the traffic would be a little bit less of a, and even though it's a minor impact to level service, as even as you stated, just curious if you looked at it from an opposite layout?
Well, just the, the only, you know, the reason why we would keep, you know, the right out over, you know, onto the west side is just inherently to, um, further minimize any additional crossing traffic that would, if they were to take the right out from the driveway if it was located on the east side, we didn't register, then you'd have, you know, some additional traffic that if someone was trying to take a left out, an additional, you know, um, traffic conflict that they'd have to, you know, kind of deal with. Whereas you don't have that by putting the right out on the right side as you're exiting. So, um, to answer your question, no, we didn't, we didn't do a thorough analysis of that, but, um, you know, you know, based on my background in traffic, I, I don't, I don't expect they would have a significant, you know, change in the operations. It was more of a trying to reduce conflicts by, by, by moving it the right further off of the site so you wouldn't have additional conflicts for left turning traffic to have to deal with.
Yeah, that, that part's understood. I'm just looking at, you're kind of doing a left-hand turn kind of where the lane splits into two going eastbound, uh, near, near that traffic light. So, um, just more curious about and concerned about them getting a left-hand turn there trying to get across. So.
So, yeah, then in, in term, just to, you know, kind of, in terms of, you know, how, how it calculates, you know, gaps and, 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 and acceptable, uh, parameters for left turn, we look at crossing, you know, the traffic of the opposing lane and getting into, um, you know, the first lane there, uh, as you go. So, uh, inherently there wouldn't be much, much difference moving it to where it kind of opens up into two lanes as. it kind of opens up into two lanes as, you know, as it goes into, you know, one lane on the west side of the valley, because inherently we look at, you know, turning into the first lane.
All right. And the last question, because I couldn't find it on the plan, was the snow storage, snow, snow storage on, on the plans. Can you point those out?
Sure. So we call out for a snow storage pile, and I apologize because there's a lot of dashed lines here, but we called out for snow storage along the rear here, you know, just to the east of the, of the pond, and then also some snow storage area for the front parking lot, you know, along the front here as well.
So you're going to push it from the ends, east and southwest, east and west?
Yeah, I mean, you mean, the thought would be to push it and then, you know, whatever means is needed to get up on the curb. If they need a little load or, or, you know, a little dozer or bobcat, something to that effect, whatever's needed, you know, that's they're going to have to get up into the grass areas.
I, I have one more point to make.
Sure.
If, if a sidewalk was to go in the front, that would solve another problem. That's a choke point right there on 101 where the highway becomes restricted. If you were to put a sidewalk on your property, the state would be forced to widen that in front of where you're proposing this shopping center, at least down to where your westernmost exit would exist.
I'm not sure I follow.
Well, I'm following the dotted line where, you know, the state has a right-of-way right up until that, that dotted line. If you put a sidewalk in there, that would automatically widen that road in front of your establishment.
Well, I think, so what they, you know, what, you know, right-of-way aside, I know it's a little bit awkward here because it kind of does a V shape, kind of goes away from the edge of pavement and then kind of back down to it again as you go to the west. But the sidewalk, generally the state standard is for a three to four foot wide, I think it's a three-foot wide snow shelf and then a four to five-foot wide paved concrete, you know, concrete sidewalk. So that would essentially just be, you know, for argument sake, the sidewalk itself would be located, you know, call it three feet off of the existing or proposed edge of pavement within the right-of-way.
Not if it's, not if that's state property.
Say again?
Not if that's state property. It's my understanding by what the director just said that the dotted line is your property line.
Yeah, this is, this is our property.
So that's where your sidewalk would have to go in?
The sidewalk would have to, would likely have to go in the right-of-way. Normally it goes in the public right-of-way, which would be within the state right-of-way generally.
Well, it certainly wouldn't go.
We don't have it on, on private, normally we don't have it on private property because then when you get to the, your property line limits, it's, it's difficult to do continuation, you know, on private property than you could do it within the right-of-way. So, you know, not to say we couldn't, but generally when we do a sidewalk, it would be in either the state or the town's right-of-way. So if it were to go in, likely it would be located three, you know, three feet off of the existing edge of pavement.
I don't think so.
Like, so the, like, that snow shelf and then four-foot walk. So, which would be contained within the state right-of-way as it is. I, I don't, I don't foresee them having to take, you know, any property to do that. If we were to try to do it here, you know, within the limits between our, and I know this is a little grainy, I'm sorry, you know, our curb line here and the, and the property line, you know, it would, it would rid us of all the landscape plantings that we have proposed along the front. We would have, essentially have to remove them in order to do a sidewalk adjacent to that curb, if that was, if that's what you were suggesting.
Mr. Moore, if you could hold a minute?
Yeah.
Okay. So the property was rezoned, I want to say.
Jonathan from the zoning enforcement.
Yep. So the, so the property was rezoned in like two, the early 2000s to Village Commercial along with the majority of the properties going to Pleasant Street, going down to Soap Street. So when we're talking about reasonable use for the property, it is reasonable for permitted uses under Village Commercial. It's assumed that there's certain levels of service in terms of road access, pedestrian access to the site. When we're talking about off-site improvements, there's been some recent case law that cautions commissions in requiring off-site improvements. An applicant can generally offer up, we will reach out to the state, we'll explore options, but we can't require anything off the property in that easement. This is somewhat unique application because we have the benefit, when we're talking about an off-site of that easement, that's essentially a proposed development easement. So it's an attempt, I believe, by the applicant, and I'll let the applicant answer if I'm speaking out of turn, an attempt to address those pedestrian and access concerns to make it more reasonable for the level of development for these proposed sites. But as far as off-site improvements, although the commission gets the benefit of these proposed off-site improvements potentially with the town, if the town agrees to that easement, beyond that, as it goes to the bank property or to the residential properties, which are also still zoned Village Commercial to the west, we can't require anything like that. Essentially, even if the applicant was to put in a sidewalk in the front and even got the improvements, which is very, or approval from the state, which I'll say is speculative, it would be a sidewalk to nowhere. The assumption, or it's not a, it's not a statement of fact that the state will agree to putting more sidewalks along that same corridor. That'd be a significant and capital project for the state to put those sidewalks. It would be probably individual at best when you have them at the other side. But I just wanted to bring that up in terms of when we look at rezoning, it was already rezoned. The only reason this is going for special permit is the drive-through. Other than that, they're pretty much permitted use. But with that, I'll.
But a special permit, special permit opens the door for?
For a full review. Agreed. Yep.
Okay. I'm going to open this for the public because we don't need to be, tonight we've got other hearings going on and this is going to be continued anyway. So we'll try to get some comment in here from the public. And anybody want to speak one at a time, identify yourselves, addresses, and keep it to the five-minute limit?
Okay. I'm Donna Bromwell. I live up on 699 Bailey Hill Road up in East Killingley. I've been in town for over 40 years and I've been on a conservation commission for over 20 years. Been involved in looking at how the town develops and all that kind of good stuff. Been involved in the plan of conservation development and all that. So I've been around a while. This right-of-way thing is utterly ridiculous. I cannot believe it's even being proposed. There should be no reason for we on the town to allow a for-profit business to have a right-of-way across our town land, our park. That just doesn't make any sense at all. The proposed property already will have two entrances and exits. I can't see any reason why it needs this third thing that, that would impede on our town park. That just is, to me is crazy. A number of things came up in my mind. Dayville, talking about the sidewalk, definitely I think it does need a sidewalk on that side. You know, that they say they can't do it and all that kind of stuff. Well, I'm sure there's a way to do it. Maybe the whole, the road there does need to be redesigned to be wider because that is the spot where it shrinks down and that is difficult. As Dayville grows more, probably it will, that's a growth area that we've determined for our town, that that road will probably need to be reworked again. Let's see, what are my other? I'm sure that the proposed developer can make some adjustments. Maybe they need to shrink their building, their proposed structure and all that kind of stuff to make it work. I am absolutely against allowing a for-profit business to go through our, our parks. They, they mentioned the, the establishments or could be restaurants and drinking. We sure as heck don't want people who are drinking coming through our park. That's nuts. The kids and the public and all that kind of thing. Also, there's a gate there. When does the gate get closed to Owen Bell Park? If they mentioned somewhere, somebody mentioned like 10 o'clock or something like that. Well, I don't know who closes the gate to Owen Bell Park. What time is that? There are a number of other businesses that, that this, this proposal has three entrances, goings in and out, whatever you call them. There are a number of businesses that only have one. For example, the bank next door has only one driveway. You go in, you go out, you wait until you can get out and you do it. Big Y, big establishment, the cannabis thing and all that stuff. I'm not against any of that. But that has only one entrance on the, on the main road. Why should this proposal have three? Doesn't make sense to me. Also, I've been on conservation for over 20 years now, and my understanding is that there should be a 10% set aside for open space or else pay into our open space land acquisition fund, an amount equal to a, some open space. Probably that doesn't, that particular property doesn't suit itself to having a, a piece of land to be considered open space or conservation easement. But I know in some regulations there, some of the zoning regulations, their request is for 10% open space or a fee in lieu instead of giving us property, give us money for our open space land acquisition fund. All this other stuff they've been talking about tonight, just all the, the details, the overall picture, I want to step back and say this, this whole access thing is utterly nuts. Let's see. Guess maybe that's the extent of my various notes. But anyhow, I'm totally against that, that driveway going through Owen Bell Park. It's not necessary. I think it's dangerous for kids and, and people using the park. It just doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Ed Grandowski, Upper Maple Street, Town Council, District Two. This is my district. I'm not happy with the right-of-way driveway through Owen Bell Park idea. Now, in your discussion about the sidewalk, the guy was saying safety hazard, safety hazard along 101. Well, we are creating a new safety hazard in Owen Bell Park. We are putting a through driveway in with who knows what kind of traffic. Is it the truck traffic making deliveries? What is going to be going through there? Now, right now we have a parking lot and this, on one side, that this driveway is going to bisect. Now, I don't care how many stop signs, speed bumps or what have you, it doesn't stop the traffic. And if we as a town sell a piece of property to encourage this type of activity, we're nuts. Okay. Now, there's, is this developer or his successor, successor going to maintain the driveway and sidewalks for time immemorial? Okay? They're going to put a driveway in, a paved area, they're supposed to put it in. How are they going to maintain it? Is there going to be a maintenance agreement for time immemorial? Is there going to be an insurance agreement for both workman's comp and liability yearly for time immemorial? Now, a plan of conservation and development and whatnot, we're looking for more open space. Here we are, this is our pristine recreational park, and we are selling a right-of-way for a song. You know, and then, you know, if we're trying to increase our open space and our recreation, what in God's name are we doing selling off something like this? Now, Mr. Saranopoulos.
Ed, just, just for the record, we don't control that. You guys do, but this September 12th meeting, all right?
You guys designed the sidewalk going through there. I, you know, I'm just saying, and then.
Just keep in mind.
Okay, whatever. Now, going through, Mrs. Saranopoulos' point about the sidewalk in the front, that's where it should be. The sidewalk should be in front. If, if in this proposal, we as the town are giving a right-of-way for something developer to make their development happen, maybe the developer should go to the bank and get right-of-way on that property adjacent to 101 to get a sidewalk from their property to the intersection. People in the intersection are, are parking on the other side, so how are they going to have to go? They're going to have to go up the new right-of-way to the back of the development to go to the front to get to this area. That's not going to happen. They're going to go from Owen Bell, the, the development right across in the front, they're going to go across the street. So some side of sidewalk has to be there. Now, in the comments to the, the developer agrees that until you guys and the town approve this, DOT doesn't do anything. So this should be a, a proposal on its own without the right-of-way in the back going through Owen Bell Park. It should stand on its own merit. If they can't do it with the size of the development they have, maybe squash it down a little bit, but make it happen within the confines of their own property or the property they're looking at buying. As far as when it comes to me and the council for the right-of-way, I am voting no on it. But I think you guys, there's safety issues all over this, this project. The more I listen here, I'm more disgusted that this even came forward. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Kurt Schmidt. I've lived on the Town Farm Road for 61 years. Moved there in 1952, when it was just a cart path from 101 to Route 12. I saw all the industry and so forth build up around it. And I think you will, you'll kind of admit that the, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Zips Four Corners and the entrance to the Killingley Commons, the two busiest intersections that we have in this town. Am I right? Does anybody know? I, I think you've all gone to Killingley Commons, so you, you know how difficult it is. I've seen people come off the off-ramp going southbound, coming down and going right across the, the area without, with the, with the lights turning yellow and so forth. There's been many, many accidents there. We've had accidents at, at Zips Four Corners. We've had accidents at the entrance of, of 395. We've had accidents right out front of my house at the end of Town Farm Road where cars don't pay too much attention to the lights. And then the Dunkin' Donuts across the street and the, the Stewart City Savings Bank. If they don't have one accident a month there, they don't, there isn't any. So we have issues, I have issues with safety. The easement to me is, is, doesn't pass the sensibility test to me. We've got a gem, just like Mr. Grandowski said, we've got a gem of a park down there that's going to be possibly, with the traffic that's going to be there and with the kids down there, I don't like this at all. They've been a good neighbor to me, the park has, even though we can't get out of that road sometime. If they have a Little League game, softball game, baseball game, they're parked, you know, nose to tail all the way up and down the road. If I have to get out, I have to do it before any of these things happen. Don't really mind too much. But you've got to understand that when you get to the end of Town Farm Road, the banking for cars is only three before you back up into the entrance to Owen Bell Park. There can only be three cars going right and you got three cars going left. Otherwise, you're going to stop all that traffic coming down from the easement down to Town Farm Road to get out. You've got the Berkshire Bank that empties out right across the street from that entrance to the easement. It's on the east side of. to the easement that's on the east side of Town Farm Road. You've got the medical center whose people can't come out and they can't go left, they have to go right. So what they do is they come down that side road between Berkshire Bank and they come back out on Town Farm Road and they just pull up to that stop bar. And it's just, there's just total, total chaos sometime in that place. Kids that wanna go across the street to McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts hit that light and the light is there for, say you're sitting there five to ten minutes. And you've got all these impatient people with three, three lines of traffic coming down from the east, two coming down from the west, one that wants to turn into Town Farm Road. I mean, you've got, you've got a cluster of vehicles there, and now you're gonna put this easement in, that's, it's gonna add to the traffic. It has to add to the traffic. You're asking for more of a safety issue of preventing, you know, accidents than you are anything else by not putting this easement in. And I've got a special place in my heart for that place. I played in those fields in the back there when the old Town Farm was there, was there when they burnt it down. I've been through it all and I don't really mind, I like the park, I enjoy the park, I enjoy the kids, it's a great place. Is there traffic problems constantly? Yes. Do I have a hard time getting out of my house sometime? Yes. So I have to schedule it prior and after. But if you get a big event down there, they don't, that park doesn't empty out for about an hour with the traffic because you only got one light and one exit from the park to Route 101. Why does some of these places, why have they used this place for a commercial strip mall? How about all the empty spaces we got over in Killingley Commons? Why isn't anything done over there? Now, maybe you're saying, well, the McDonald's doesn't want a competition that close or whatever, but you got two medical buildings they're gonna put in there. Why don't they put them over across the street where they got plenty of parking in the Killingley Commons? I don't know how you're gonna, you're gonna handle the traffic. I don't know if you've got DOT involved in this yet.
They can't do anything until it's approved.
They can't do anything till it's approved with all the traffic count that they must have for this area? I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. This is, this is totally the biggest snafu I've ever seen as far as, I'm not against progress in this area, really not. I'm not, I'm not an old fart that just, you know, complains about this and complains about that. This is a serious thing for you people. You've got kids in this park, whether the skate park, whether you got seniors playing pickleball, whether you have tennis players, you got basketball players, and you've got all these functions that are going on down there.
Mr. Smith, with all due respect, that's been over five minutes, he says, so if you're gonna come back next, this is gonna continue.
Well, okay.
So.
I think I'm done, I think I said my point.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak?
Ed Grandowski, I have comments from John LaBelle, 57 Island Road. Davil proposed retail store is at 101 adjacent to Bell Park. To members of this commission, thank you for the opportunity of speaking at this meeting. My comments are as follows. This development is proposed to be situated adjacent to the most prominent entertainment park in Killingley. I am concerned about the additional vehicle traffic these businesses will attract, and any additional hazard people turning into the property and exiting property will present to the traffic that at times already overwhelms Route 101 in this area. I am even more concerned about the additional vehicles mixing with children using Bell Park, any additional hazard, and any additional hazard that will present. I am also concerned that the granting of the right-of-way will reduce the amount of open space, usable space in Owen Bell Park. I am concerned that the utilization of this land runs contrary to the intention of the plan of conservation and development by the town of Killingley. Beyond safety concerns and looking at the aesthetic features of the proposed development, it pays little respect to the architecture of the surrounding area and seems to me little effort in presenting a design that is aesthetically pleasing. I realize this commission may not have yet drawn up architectural examples as stated in the plan of development. However, it would seem as though it would have been more thought given to the aesthetic features of the building structures as well as the signage. I also question as to how we can let developments such as this take place in the face of the empty stores across the street as well as on Route 12. There has been no discussion about the potential opportunities those doors would present and perhaps at a lesser cost in constructing these buildings. In addition, it is a well-known fact that we have a problem with ozone layer, and every time we build a building, it contributes further to its demise. Even the American Bar Association has come out and said, stop the building, we use what we have, we use what we have from an ozone point of view. I assure you that I'd like to see the additional taxes this project would add to tax rolls. However, I feel the issues I present are an overriding factor. And he has additional comments, and I will add this for the record.
Okay, anybody else?
Stuart Rivers River Road, 300 River Road, Killingley. I don't live near there, but I am a citizen of the town. I'm very concerned about the encroachment of this project on our, in our park for the kids. The town is gonna grow, we're gonna have more population, we need more land. We shouldn't be giving it away to right-aways for these projects. Mr. Grandowski was absolutely right. This project should be presented without that right-of-way. And after they get approval, then they should go to the state, either the money should come out of the state or out of that project or that, that person that's running the project should pay for the improvements on the road, either a light or widening. We all know, right now in Davil, in front of Killingley Commons, how inadequate that road is and how it was poorly designed. I can name three or four things that I've seen there, not individuals, but the way the road is designed. I've seen people turn left, going, going west before the gas station, cut right in front of the other traffic. You see people in the right, in the left lane going west, right by this situation, thinking they can go straight ahead when that road goes left into the, into the, to the park. And the road is, you know, was done cheaply, the, the original design, and maybe the state will step forward and make some improvements, but I don't think it should be on the, on the town to give them any land for an easement. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening, James Weiss, 514 Hartford Pike, Davil. Thank you for the time that you allow and the effort that you put forth. I'm not in favor at all of this development. This mini strip mall with sixty-six parking spots is a tremendous burden on that location. It's gonna alter the essential character of the neighborhood, it's gonna reduce housing, which is a vital segment of the town and the people. The change will negatively affect property values and cause a larger burden on the current road conditions, as well as pose a threat to health and safety in the neighborhood. Pollution factors are another variable. You see the trash on that road, you know, we're just trying to preserve.